Good evening. Welcome to the July 9, 2024 City Council meeting. The meeting is hereby called to order. Members of the public may attend this City Council meeting in person or may watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at www.yz.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting, in advance, or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You will be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Second item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask everyone who is able to please stand and follow along.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the roll call. Let the record reflect that all members of the council are present with the exception of Councilmember Alex Plekish. I'd also like to note that earlier this evening, the council participated in a workshop and reviewed and discussed the long-term staffing plan and a draft special event permit ordinance. Next item is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as is, or would anyone care to make any changes?
I'll approve the agenda as outlined, Mayor, or I'll move to.
No, thank you. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes, and we'll move on to the public forum. As a reminder for those members of the public in attendance this evening, of which I see none, who may be interested in speaking, we ask that you please state your name, address, indicate if you're representing a group, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The item you wish to speak about is something that is on the agenda. For those that are in person, please fill out a room at the table in the back of the room and hand it to staff. For those that are watching via Zoom, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you wish to speak about. We will also require that your camera is turned on when you speak. Seeing that we don't have anybody here in attendance, I will safely assume that no one has turned in a blue card.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
And do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do not.
All right. I don't know what cost we have associated with running Zoom for each of our meetings, but if there is one, I don't believe we've had anybody in attendance for a good, at least, year and a half.
Madam Mayor, yeah, good point. We've acknowledged that, too. Staff's preference is to wait to see when we have a more kind of robust planning item. If we still, you know, we don't have anybody on, then it might make sense to not offer that, but at the end of the day, it's not costing us anything, aside from taking a few minutes at a meeting to check.
Perfect, okay. As long as we weren't paying for something that isn't being used. All right, very good. All right, so that takes us then to item number six, which is new agenda items. Council, does anyone have an item that they would like to bring up for discussion at a future meeting? Yes, Councilmember McDonald.
I mentioned to the city manager earlier this morning, or this before our meeting, that I thought it was important that we, in the smaller residential neighborhoods, we talk and have a conversation about setbacks, as I've been hearing that feedback from the community quite a bit.
So setbacks in terms of new construction, front yard setbacks?
Yard setbacks and some design, looking at maybe design limitations of what can be in those setbacks.
Okay. Yes, I know that that has definitely been a conversation for quite some time. We did go through some rezoning and planning. It has been, I know that having lived in the same neighborhood, especially with these smaller lots, it's imperative that we get it right in terms of finding that percentage or that front yard setback to not be necessarily at, let's say, 30 feet.
Right.
And every house that has been there since 1920, whatever, might be setback to 50, and then all of a sudden you have somebody who builds a new house, and boom, they're almost at the sidewalk. So do any members of the council have any objection to having that discussion at a later date?
Madam Mayor, what I would recommend is that, I don't even have any baseline information to provide, so I would follow up with everybody on the council through communication about what our current status is, if we've done any recent changes, and if we have anything that's on our docket. And then I would hopefully get some direction from you all if you want to have a more thorough discussion about future steps.
Yep, that sounds, you're in agreement, Councilmember McDonald, that would be okay?
That'd be great.
All right, very good. Yeah, if we could see where that might fit in the strategic plan timing, what we've done so far, if you could follow up with Councilmember McDonald, I'll leave it to her, if she wants to pursue like a broader conversation with the rest of the council, since she brought it up this evening. And if she is okay with the direction, then we'll take it from there.
Sounds great. I think at the next couple of meetings, we're going to have a strategic plan update, so that'll be good timing for that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Any items?
No.
All right, very good. Then I will move on then to the consent agenda, and this evening, we have the following items: approval of the City Council workshop and regular meeting minutes of June 18, 2024; approval of the check register; approval of municipal licenses; approval of a professional services agreement with SRF Consulting Group, Inc. for downtown YZ parking study; adoption of Resolution 23-2024, accepting a donation from the Miles Family Fund and YZ Alliance Club; adoption of Resolution 24-2024, accepting a donation from CenterPoint Energy for life vests and throw ropes; award of contract to SNJ Glass, Inc. for the City Hall Window Replacement Project; and adoption of Resolution 27-2024, appointing election judges for the 2024 elections. Council, do any of you have any questions about the items on the consent agenda or wish to pull an item for further discussion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I was hoping to pull Item G just to get some more clarification on
Okay.
what are the trade-offs in the design? It was really hard to see in the document, what we're trading off, what are the differences?
Very good. Any other items that you'd like to pull? No?
Nope.
Very good. Staff, council would like to have some additional information, it sounds like, on the City Hall Window Replacement Project. And it sounds like maybe about the aesthetics?
Yeah.
What we currently have versus what's proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
There was a picture, and it wasn't clear to me, and I think Councilman Iverson.
Madam Mayor, I think it's on page 62. There you go. So the big difference here, the low bidder is the image in the middle, as you can see under low bid, and then the second low bid is to the right. And the big difference there for the low bid, the surface of the window or the face of the, I'm sorry, the face of the frame, in order for that transition from the face of the frame to the actual glass is angled. The second low bidder, it's not angled, it's a 90-degree, or it goes straight directly to the glass, flat to the glass, how it is today on our windows.
Sorry.
Yeah, not very well put. Maybe Director Kella, Kelly? Okay.
Perfect.
Mike, do you have the other color selections?
And generally speaking, the color is, needs to match the frames as they are now. Right now, they're a little bit darker than they normally would because we've stained them a lot to try to, you know, Band-Aid the structure together of the frame, but they'll generally be the same color as the existing frames, but in metal.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. The materials are, we currently have wood.
Wood interior and exterior, it'll go from that to metal exterior, but retaining the wood interior.
Okay, so it's clad?
Yes.
On the outside, a metal clad?
Yep.
Okay.
Which is in order to preserve the length and the
Okay.
the life of the window to mitigate the leaking that we have now.
So if I understand correctly, then what you were explaining previously is the H window, the sill, is angled, so the water drips away from the window, whereas Marvin is a, what is that, a 90? 90-degree?
Perpendicular, I don't know.
Should have paid closer attention, or is that, yeah, that would be 90.
That's what I was struggling on.
Thank you. And it would be 90, so potentially, we have water that could, that would sit, is that the concern, or is that just a different?
With both of the systems that are provided as examples to you, and let me clarify, the white one is the H window, which is the low bid. The black one is the Marvin window, which is the second low bid.
Are those weep holes?
Yeah, what is with the holes?
They're weep holes. If water were to get in behind the glass or behind the caulking, it would have a place to escape from the system. If it gets caught behind the window, very similar to what we have happening with our existing wood windows, it starts to rot out the wood.
Yep.
So it's, these two products are both more of a system. They are intended to last much longer than a traditional wood window because they're meant to drain, they're meant to have more maintenance-free material, and in the case of, just as the mayor mentioned, the H window, its design with the sloped sill, and in fact, a sloped frame all the way around, will drain and shed water off a little bit better. According to our consultant, each of the two products meet our design and performance specifications.
Huge difference in the depth, though. That one's like two and a half inches, and this one's like half an inch. What is, what are we out there now?
Probably right in between. That's probably closer to the Marvin window on the outside.
Can you go back to the full picture where you show all three of the images? So I know it's the wood, and you said you've stained it. When I look at the other options with the copper color, the tone is really cool, and it, to me, it doesn't seem to work with the brick. I would rather see something in a deeper tone that actually doesn't have such a contrast with the brick. They're, they just, it's significantly cooler than the warmth that you get from the brick.
You're talking about hair?
Yeah, just the tones.
Which one do you like?
I prefer a deeper tone, the wood ones, so something perhaps in a brown or a black or something, because these are going to really pop. I mean, you're going to see that copper when you pull up, you're going to see a ton of copper. And when you look at the front door, it's got that more of that kind of red cherry type of a wood look, it's going to completely fight with that.
And the, the color sample that we had when we brought it out here to compare it, I think a pretty good amount of our staff actually looked at it to make sure that I wasn't picking it. Or Jeff wasn't picking it. We chose our interior design team to take a look at it, and the copper was what they felt was the best match to the existing color that we have today.
Boy, because the photo does not show that. I wish we had the sample.
So do I.
Because I'm not comfortable making that decision with the tones that are in front of me, being in the industry. It's, my eye doesn't see it.
We can take that direction, though, and make sure that it's, you know, is as close to the existing as possible.
How are these mocked up? Is this a mock-up, or were you actually, did you replace a window and take a picture, but the guy's standing in the same spot here, so?
It's a computer rendering.
So the one difference that I noted, and I'd be curious as to the consultant's point of view, the Marvin window is wood, but it goes, it traverses into and is part, and then clad with this metal cladding.
Yep.
It almost feels like a composite, which is why I hesitated. Whereas the H window appears to be hollow, so all channels. Any concerns about insulation? We are in a rather extreme winter climate, excluding last year, of course. But any concerns, was that discussed at all?
Both, both products were, meet, actually, let me back up. Both products meet the design and performance specifications that we had intended. It includes kind of double-pane windows, better insulating, longer-lasting. So both products meet those standards.
So is this going to be insulated, though? Because this is just hollow metal.
That's how they are. That's how a lot of them are.
They are?
Yep.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Innovative windows.
And in both cases, the interior wood replacement that we have will match our interior wood that we have, casing, framework.
Yeah. Well, regardless of how beautiful our existing windows are, they're only so beautiful when they leak like colanders.
Yes.
And you walk into someone's office, and they're essentially in a waterfall.
Mousetrap.
Mousetrap.
Of, of colanders and containers trying to keep the water off their
Exactly, exactly. So, okay, thank you. Other questions?
Just another comment.
An observation?
I don't like all the weep holes.
Pardon me?
I don't like the weep holes. I'm just kind of a little design snot. I just, aesthetically, that's like my eye went to, then I thought, is that just a little thing on the rendering, and that's not really there? My personal preference is I like the aesthetics of the Marvin.
Okay.
Being in the, again, the industry, I just think the Marvin is a little bit more sophisticated-looking window.
And the Marvin has weep holes as well.
At the same interval?
It's close, not exactly the same, but it does need to drain, just like the others. Even our existing wood windows, they may not be weep holes, they actually have, it's a
It's a colander.
Well, it's a
There are a lot of weep
It's a wick. It has
It is not.
It has a wick that essentially extend, or essentially extends from the interior portion of the wall where moisture might come, and wicks out through various holes when it gets wet. And that was one of the reasons why we're having the issues that we have. A previous contractor or interior staff, however, we were making updates and trying to improve the lifespan of our windows, caulked over those, and they weren't functioning the way that they were supposed to.
And that is
That wasn't determined until this more recent round of maintenance that we wanted to do.
And it happens all the time, and even homeowners, when they go to caulk around their windows, they end up caulking over the weep holes and then end up rotting out their windows. It's a common
It's a common occurrence with wood windows
Right.
or wood products. In this particular case, one of the things that we wanted was longevity. We want this product to last as long as we can, and I feel like we're getting, at least with the low bidder, a pretty good bang for the buck for what I think is going to be a long-lasting product. And I think we all understand that there is going to be somewhat of an aesthetic change to the outside of our building, and that's inherent to the fact that we've looked to change the design for performance, not just aesthetic.
Sure. Finding that Sure. Finding that blend between the two.
Yes.
Mayor, when I first saw both of these examples ahead of this meeting, my sense was just to go with the Marvin window as well, but a couple of things led me to be more in favor of this H window, which is, you know, this angle. If this, if these were smaller windows, you would have less glass, and that would be a negative. But our windows are so large that I didn't think it would bother me that much, and City Manager Adal informed me that the price difference between low and second-low was over $300,000. And so, that's why I went with the in my, in my view was, let's do the H window. We have got these large windows, and I thought $300,000 seemed like a lot of money to go with just this tiny little bit.
Agreed. Yeah, I think if, you know, if, for me, if staff, and it sounds like more than one opinion, we had an interior design committee looked and analyzed, I know we were going to consider this even a couple of weeks ago, but just weren't 100% there yet, and staff went back and got some additional information with regard to performance and color and aesthetics, that if staff comes forward to certainly, we haven't ordered the windows yet. If there's even an iota of a second thought in terms of color or matching or anything else, I would say, you know, have the interior design committee, you know, reconsider. You know, one of the things, I think, one of the great things about having a classic style of architecture, and just these wonderful colors, we can really kind of lean to a lot of, we can pick a lot of different colors within the building itself and the existing stain to really make it look beautiful. To me, it doesn't have to match exactly. We have stone and brick and all different elements that we could borrow from. So to Councilmember Iverson's point, if it was dark, I think I'd like the dark. I think it would, it would be beautiful. But ultimately, I will defer to staff's opinion based on the samples. I did not see the color samples. And I agree with Councilmember McDonald, you know, for it is slightly different. The weep holes are prominent, and maybe that's what we need, especially for windows that size. Scale might require something that prominent. But the savings to have fully functioning windows and that are repaired in good condition that will last, let's make, we'll just have to make sure we don't caulk the weep holes on this one.
We will not.
Can I add one more?
Was it you, Mike?
It was not.
When it comes to color and the interior design group that's considering this, my suggestion is to match it closest to what the original architect wanted. I think that's always the truest way. There was it's just a great baseline to, instead of trying to change the style, this feels more classic, so I would look back at what color they were when this building was first built and go with that closest match.
I mean, I like that, Molly. I just, again, I just, I'd rather take a little bit of time and there are, I do this for a living every day, and so I know that people have strong opinions, and I have to work through that every single day with my clients, but they hire me for a reason. And I think it's worth the exercise to look at some other color options, because once we do this, there is no going back. And I think what Molly is saying, if we can go back to what the original stain was, this is a significant difference color. So it's hard for me to see that it's the same, and I look at this copper, it feels like it should be down in the southwest. It's not necessarily a Minnesota color you see on a home. And I don't want us to rush that. It could be something that could come next at the next council meeting if it puts it off two weeks. It's so worth it. This is a lot of windows, and it's very high-packed visibility. And it's a significant change. So I, I will plead to my fellow council members to not rush and to ask for color samples before we make this decision. It's too important.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, Councilmember Iverson. However, I think staff has spent a significant amount of time. This wasn't, you know, a fly-by-night decision. And I don't want to be in the business of picking colors for, for City Hall.
But I do that for a living, so I, it would be nice if some of my expertise could be used, and I, I feel that it's just completely being dismissed, and I don't take that the wrong way, but I I do this professionally. So there's a big difference between an opinion of someone who looks at it that doesn't do this day in and day out. And so what I'm, all I'm asking is a pause. And at the end of the day, if staff's made the right decision, I'm going to support them 100% and say, I was wrong. I think you guys made a good choice. But I can't comfortably, sorry, I'm a horse, I can't comfortably sit here today and say that. And I wish I could. I was really excited to see what you had, and when I looked at this, I was like, I can't get behind this.
But we have, here's the, I'm not willing to delay, but hear me out, please. I'm not willing to delay. We need to order windows, we need to get them installed. It's already July. That's going to take time. I don't want staff having snow blowing in while we're trying to replace windows around City Hall.
Two weeks.
But you're in the business, you know delays and project schedules, and
I don't know, I don't know what the lead time for the current windows are.
If I could just make a comment, it's going to have a little to do, to do with color and more to do with process. We've already delayed our decision on this agenda item. We've had to ask our contractors to extend their ability to not withdraw their bids by this meeting. So we've gotten permission from our bidders to extend our opportunity to make a decision until tonight. Beyond tonight, our bidders have the opportunity to withdraw their bids, no questions asked. So we need to make a decision tonight. We should have made a decision at the meeting at the end of June. We took the opportunity to try to present some renderings to assist in knowing that we had two different products. What I can say, back to the comment about color, is that when we looked at the color, we looked at it underneath the overhang here, where it's less weathered than everywhere else, to try to determine what the right color is. What I will say, because I would do the same thing at my home, is we can have them prepare a mock-up, the actual product, and it might be that one that you have in front of you, with the color that we have asked to have. And if we need to tweak that color so that it looks a little bit better, we can do that as part of our process.
I like that.
I just need to understand with our contractor, are they buying a window that is pre-colored? Or is it being painted in some fashion to the color that we have requested? But I can say that I think it would be worthwhile to have them provide a small mock-up that we can see, and even if it was that size that you have in front of you would be helpful, because you can hold it up in front of the window outside, you can hold it next to the brick. We're not asking them to prepare a full window, but if we could find some sort of in-between where
We still have to make a decision this evening.
We do need to make a decision on the bid. I think what our specifications called for was the copper color. I think there are, it's already a custom color, we're going to have to adjust it a little bit, that I think we have some wiggle room to make sure that it's the right one. So I think as part of the process, if we can approve manufacturer, we can ensure that we get the right color that matches our building before it's installed.
Okay. Very good.
Mike, I love that solution, because I don't have a problem standing behind the council's suggestion on which window to go with. And if, in that process, they can do that, I would feel so much better. And again, at the end of the day, I might come back and say, I was wrong, I think you guys made the right, but I think going through that process, this is a big investment, and it's, what, a 20-year commitment probably for these windows?
Or more.
Or more. So I, I appreciate that solution very much.
Yeah, and at a minimum, and I apologize that we weren't able to get a copy of the, the color sample wheel or tags, chips, that you could have in front of you, and earlier today in your meetings, where Jeff be able to stand outside and take a look at them and suggest what might be a better alternative color. To me, as long as it's still within the same price range as any of the colors on those chips, fine. If there's an extra cost, we'll come back and talk to you about that. I think at the end of the day, we want to make sure that you're comfortable with the right product. If the color has to change slightly, we'll make sure that that happens.
Have them take those colors off the ring, because I'll pick one. That's, that's higher price, so just take it off.
Well
You will.
Trust me, I know I will.
However, it is not one council member's decision on picking a color, so to be fair. We do need to defer, I mean, to staff who works and looks at these windows every single day. Ultimately, I, we appreciate the fact that you consult with us, but let's just, whatever the final color is, let's make sure that we, we do get this moving as quickly as possible. We do not want an open, exposed building come fall or winter while we're trying to replace windows for folks.
We'll definitely move forward with, assuming it's approved, getting some samples, we'll get feedback. We'll make the decision to move forward. The council can always bring it up if it, it's not consistent with what staff's wanting to do at the next council meeting, but I think we'll get there easily, so.
Okay, so for this meeting, we're approving the bid.
We'd love that, yes. And nothing else is, we got, we got good direction with the comment.
This is enough for a consent agenda discussion. All right, let's move on. We have any further questions or items for discussion on the consent agenda?
If I could just clarify, Madam Mayor?
No.
The action item for this is
Yeah.
Would be the approval of the project, awarding a contract to S&amp;J Glass, including the three alternates, 1, 2, and 3, for a total amount of $456,814.
And that's how it is on the memo, so when you
That's how it is on the memo. It's different on the agenda, and I just want to make sure that the motion is correct.
That's not, okay. Well, what I have is, and what I read was Item G, award of contract to S&amp;J Glass. Is there something additional I need to include in that?
I don't think so.
No, all right.
Details are encompassed in the memo, you're good.
Yep.
All right. And we will leave that as it is. So who would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. We will move on to new business, and the first item under new business is Item 8A. Consider adoption of Resolution 25-2024, appointing a planning commissioner. Well, that's exciting.
Yeah.
City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's exciting. It does bring up some unfortunate event earlier this summer when our beloved community member and longtime planning commissioner Peggy Douglas passed away suddenly. We're still grieving her and miss her, but we do need to fill her very important role and position on the planning commission. If you remember, going back to last year when we recruited for boards and commissions, we had a number of applicants that wanted to be on the planning commission. We didn't have enough spots. So based on that process, we went back to a couple of the candidates who really showed strong interest and ultimately would recommend tonight that the council adopt a resolution that would appoint Blake Cameron to the planning commission. He, I know the council, based on his background, really had a hard decision to make by not appointing him to a planning commission. So he was kind of more or less the runner-up that I wanted to bring back to the council to consider. Ultimately, we're going to have more vacancies, you know, with all the boards and commissions later this year, but we do expect there'll be some, you know, significant applications, and it's important to make sure that we have a full planning commission. So happy to answer any questions, but the recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution to appoint Blake Cameron to the planning commission until December 31, 2026.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Questions of staff? No? All right. Well, you know, you said it very well. This is an unfortunate circumstance, having lost such a longstanding, respected member of the community and serving as a planning commissioner when we lost Peggy. And the silver lining in all of this is getting to know a brand-new member of our community, serving in a number of different ways, and with many years ahead of him. You know, he has big shoes to fill, but, yeah, I was so impressed when we interviewed him. Was that about a year ago already?
Yeah, last, last November, so close to a year.
Close to a year, yeah. So jumped in with two feet, serving on Parks and Trails, and now we'll be serving as a planning commissioner, so assuming that the council is in agreement and, and passes this resolution. So very good. Well, with that, would someone care to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-2024, appointing Blake Cameron as a planning commissioner for the remaining three-year term expiring December 31, 2026?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
First and second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion passes. And we will move on to the next item under new business, and that is Item 8B. Consider adoption of Resolution 26-2024, approving excess reserve transfers. Always, I think, the best agenda item of the year, quite frankly. So, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we'll have to do our best to temper Deputy City Manager Jaeger's excitement here. But this is a good good action to consider tonight, and it speaks to the work that the council does. Deputy City Manager Jaeger and all of her staff that were in the position we are in today, but she's going to provide a little bit more details.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. At the last workshop, we presented our calculations on how much excess reserves we may have. And this concept really comes out of our fund balance policy that the council established, I think, way back in 2016. It's been a longstanding practice, where we essentially have thresholds for all kinds of different funds, the general fund, our enterprise funds, how much we need to keep in reserves, and anything above that amount is deemed excess and can be used, transferred to other projects. So after the last audit was completed, we did that calculation and are very happy to report that we had almost one, a little over $1.1 million worth of excess, and that's coming from our general fund, our motor vehicle licensing fund, our liquor fund, which comes from our bar and grill and wine and spirits operation. And then we also looked at our marina fund, as that was the first year that it had been established. So a significant amount of excess, and it's been the practice to transfer those, you know, these are regarded as kind of one-time revenues that we allocate towards one-time projects, typically capital projects. So at that discussion, the council looked at prioritizing over $800,000 of that towards the Clapbridge Park project and putting that in the Parks and Trails Fund, putting another $50,000 towards the Public Art Fund, and then holding back about $264,000 to potentially allocate towards a future cannabis enterprise fund, but as the council But as the council still is, you know, awaiting final decisions on that later this year, we've withheld that from this resolution, but we'll look to either allocate that to a future cannabis enterprise fund, or the council can prioritize those resources somewhere else at a future date. So the resolution in front of you tonight allocates $876,000, basically, towards the parks for Clapbridge Park and the Public Art Fund.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions, council? No. Well, like I said, favorite agenda item of the year. And City Manager Doll said it very well. It is a culmination of so many people's hard work and this, and people, you know, going and spending their money at city-run enterprises. And we owe it to them to get it right. They spend their hard-earned money there. And the whole purpose of these enterprises is that that money goes back into the community. And I'm really happy that as a council, we've picked some really great things to invest in. Our parks that we're so passionate about, public art, we're still working on that. It's still in its infancy, but we've heard that that's important, and it's important to the council as well. And so to get some of that seed money, I think, is a demonstration of the council's commitment to seeing that come full circle. And then that other money put aside, the $264,000, which may or may not get used for this, but to put it aside in our planning process. And if it doesn't get used for this particular enterprise, Ms. Jaeger, what would happen to those funds? Does that go back into the general fund or...
So it currently still is in the general fund. We haven't transferred it, and so we would just get direction on if you want to prioritize those resources, further resources for parks, any other projects you'd want instead of that.
Wonderful. Well, again, you know, my thanks to, to the managers of those enterprises. I mean, look at that, licensing, motor vehicles, right? That's a testament to the people actually like to come here and go to our motor vehicles and, and then the liquor fund, which is our liquor store and our bar and grill, and all the hard work that staff has put in to make them successful operations. And to the council, too, for the decisions that have been made over the years that have gotten us to this point. So it's a reflection on everybody's commitment and hard work. All right. Well, that leaves us with needing a motion to adopt Resolution 26-2024, Approving Excess Reserve Transfers, as outlined in Ms. Jaeger's presentation.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. And that takes us to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Only one thing to note tonight, and that is a little party that we're going to be throwing this weekend, July 13th, this Saturday, starting at 11:00 a.m. all the way until 2:00. We're going to celebrate, we're going to celebrate for the Lake Walk's official opening. It's going to be technically a ribbon-cutting, and you're going to be surprised by a tremendously long ribbon that's going to span the entire Lake Walk, where we're going to have the entire community come in and partake in cutting of the ribbon. So, you know, it's not meant to be a weekend thing or even a day-long thing, where we're going to, you know, block off the street for a long period of time where businesses going to suffer. Our intent is to recognize the folks that really made this all happen along the way for the over 10 years and really just celebrate and give thanks to everybody. So 11 o'clock is when the ceremony will be. It'll be about 30 minutes or so, led by yours truly, Mayor Mouton. And then following that, there's going to be a lot of activities after the official ribbon-cutting, right after the ceremony. We're going to have free boat rides, there's going to be food, there's going to be a DJ. I am not picking the music list, so don't worry about that. You wouldn't want that. We're going to have a walking tour, there's going to be an art installation, a really cool chalk art on the plaza. And then we're going to have chalk art for, more interactive, for kids to build a mural on the street. Dang, what am I missing? There's just a lot of really good things going on. It's all going to be within, you know, a few hours, from 11 to 2:00. But it's going to be really fun and really special, and it's supposed to be nice, just again, really meant to recognize and celebrate what this community, what this organization has accomplished in getting people direct access to the lake. It's been a long road, and we should give ourselves a pat on the back, and that's what we're going to do. And we want everybody to come and celebrate with us.
Oh, absolutely. I'm really excited, but I'm also really nervous, I have to tell you, of all the events. I mean, this is really the culmination of so many years of dreaming, of fundraising, of pitching, of selling, of coaxing, of making decisions. And the feedback that I have received about the boardwalk has, from people near and far, that is so special. I have intentionally not stepped foot on the boardwalk and will not until Saturday for the very first time. So I, this is my official ribbon-cutting, I know.
Bring these.
Bring the Kleenex, please. You know me well. So it is, it's really exciting. I'm glad there's a DJ. I hope I don't, I mean, I may break out in a dance, but not that anybody needs to see that. So it's just such a fun time. There'll be hot dog and... Hot dogs?
Ice cream.
Ice cream.
Free ice cream for kids.
Oh. Oh. I mean, it's great for the kids, but...
Kids of all ages, yes.
Kids of all ages, young at heart, yes. Yeah, I mean, we love our Ben &amp; Jerry's in town. We do, we do. Yeah, so, and, yeah, it'll be just so wonderful to celebrate with everyone. So 11 to 2:00 on the Panway.
On the Panway, and ceremony's from 11 to 11:30-ish.
Yes. Fantastic. Wow. Anything else from anybody? No? All right. I expect to see everybody's dancing shoes on on Saturday. Wonderful. All right. Well, seeing that there's nothing else, how about a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
I will second that.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned.